All right, good evening, everybody. At this time, if you're able to rise, please do so for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge to this bill of flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God in the highest court with liberty and justice for all.
All right, welcome to our final budget work session for this year. At this time, I'll turn it over to Superintendent Schwartz.
Whoops. Okay. All righty. So our goals for this evening, in keeping with setting goals for each of our budget work sessions, we want to debunk the latest myths. We want to be able to answer any questions board members may have. We want to review two budget scenarios options. And we want to have the board adopt a spending limit this evening either at or above the tax levy limit of 3.25%. So let's start with our myths to be busted. Last week, it was stated that color copies cost the district $2 per page. That's actually not accurate. I'm not going to read to you, but I will tell you that Ms. Johnson, our IT Director, and Mr. Giaquinto have worked very diligently this year to replace copiers ahead of their expiration date. And in doing so, to get us copiers that are, I'm going to call them hardier than the copiers that we've had in the past, so that stand up to more use. We also are implementing a system called Paper Cut that will limit the number of copies you can make in color and in black and white to try to cut back on our copier use and our paper usage. So this is actually what we're doing right now. This notion, again, that we unilaterally went to impasse during negotiations with the SGTA and left after two meetings, I would simply point out, all of those dates are dates on which we had meetings. And it was actually January 15th of 2025 that we mutually declared impasse. So it's not that people don't want to be talking to each other. That team worked very hard. Our team worked very hard. As I said before, we were just at a point where we couldn't seem to move forward, but we have met often, and I appreciate their willingness to do that with us. And finally, that the reductions that we've talked about are not equitable. I would just tell you that of those 24 reductions we talked about, 11 were due to attrition. Two are folks that we hire from another company who won't return to us. Four are vacant positions. And seven are job eliminations, which includes two positions at central office, another one where the individual's going to have an option to go back to the building. But we did not unilaterally touch 14 people's jobs and lay them off. With that, I want to take a look at the comparison of impacted FTEs. So we have our 25-26 carryforward budget. And you can see there the number of regular education teachers. And then in the superintendent's recommended budget, where we're at, that includes those attritions. And then doing some internal shifting. And the chart reads the same way the rest of the way down. So there are instructional changes, admin building changes, admin changes, buildings and grounds, and secretarial and management confidential, and non-instructional changes. And if you look at that column, the percent of change from the carryforward budget, you'll see it's been pretty consistent with the exception of secretarial and management confidential, where we've taken the biggest hit. There was a question asked over the weekend about staying under the tax cap and that if not, property owners eligible for the New York State Star rebate check would not get one. That isn't accurate. That was true in a two-year tax relief program that ended in 2016. But right now, a budget that exceeds the tax cap does not affect Star credits or exemptions. Drew, do you want to add anything to that? So I'm going to talk to you a little bit about the two scenarios. What I'm calling Scenario One this week is the recommended budget, the superintendent's recommended budget, which I brought you last week. That was at our tax levy limit of 3.25%. Restored SROs and summer learning leaps, including, and also maintains our current programming. And that reduced our tax rate to 1.63% and a spending increase of 2.19%, which is much more in line when you look at the chart that has the 10-year history. We're going to talk more about this, and we're also going to talk about Scenario Two, which is to adopt a spending limit with additions. Last week, as we were wrapping up, the board had asked me to come back and talk to you about what it means if we add back some of the things you are concerned about, particularly in terms of teaching staff. So that would generate a tax levy increase of 5.09%, which exceeds our tax levy limit, which means it will require a 60% supermajority vote to pass. It includes the same reductions in expenses as were in my superintendent's recommended budget, but fully restores 2.0 SROs and adds back, adds back two reading teachers and an elementary librarian. We've also picked up aid, so it recognizes 130,000 in aid. And that would bring our tax rate to 3.44% with a spending increase of 2.75%. And then the gap to the tax levy limit would increase to 614,115. Drew, before I turn it over to Rick, do you want to come and say some things?
So the additional revenue which you saw in the superintendent's draft wasn't aid. It was, we increased the use of our tax surcery reserve, and we added some billings that we get for health and welfare and high ESPs. That's the 13500 that we haven't changed the state aid since the governor's proposal.
And now the test folks have questions about library and also about reading. I'm going to ask them to talk either here or there, Rick, but to these programs scenarios.
Good evening. I just wanted to provide some context. If you did decide to go with one librarian reduction, what the schedule could look like next year? So this has our four elementaries and shows what the library schedule would look like at each of those buildings. As you could see, each library would be closed from one to two days out of every six. The elementary functions on a six-day rotation. However, all students would receive their library class. IOPOL would also still run. So this is a draft schedule, what it could look like next year if you did reduce a librarian.
Do you guys have a scenario to talk? Is this scenario one? If we lose the library, what happens? Or this is scenario one. Correct. This is what we would do if we reduced that superintendent's recommendation.
Right. And if we do two, they would have a library every day. Would we add the library back in?
Right. We add the library back in. The libraries would be open.
Open every day.
However, I think as Mr. O'Keefe pointed out in his math hall, with 90 minutes of BLA and 60 minutes of math, it's hard to schedule the libraries.
Correct.
So how does the different lockdowns work? What's the difference between now and library? How does this affect the non-librarian?
The library's open, right? So kids have access to it every single day. And so that would probably be the biggest drawback to reducing the librarian, is that there would be dark days in the library.
Question for you, Rick. So on the lockdown days, they're simply just missing opportunity to access the library? Or is there some type of additional class or program?
So they would still be receiving their library class, the same as they are currently. There would just be days where there wouldn't be a librarian there to help check out books, that sort of thing.
So just checking out, is it not like the library classroom? It's not global?
I mean, librarians do an awful lot. I don't want to sell them any short shrift. They help with RTI, that sort of things. We do believe that they can still provide most of that service with one less librarian.
So, I have a question. Let's, sorry, go back there. Let's say, hypothetically, we do this round. Let's say SAT day three loses a librarian for calling sick, and so does Lincoln. How do we cover that? Where do we start?
There's two routes. You can either try to get a sub to cover, or the library is closed.
Where is IOPOL? Would that help?
It would be in where it says classes. It'd be part of their classes. So it'd be library classes and IOPOL. So in regard to reading at the elementary level, this is our current enrollment each building. We pulled enrollment numbers from Bed-Stay, which is in October, so it could be give or take a few students at each of those elementaries. How many students are currently enrolled in our AIS or RTI program at each of the elementary buildings? And how many reading teachers are currently housed in each of those buildings? And so you'll notice that Glendal, with an enrollment of 224 students, has two reading teachers, right? Glenn Warden and Lincoln have similar RTI numbers, lower enrollment, but they each have an additional reading teacher. And so the proposal would be for Lincoln and Glenn Warden to each excess one reading position, so they each be down to two reading teachers. And we believe that they would be able to provide service to all students who qualify for RTI. Once again, it's like our librarians, our reading teachers do so much more than provide service to just these RTI students. So there's always going to be an impact when you reduce staff. But from an RTI perspective, we would be able to provide service to all of those students with two reading teachers, like Glenn Warden and at Lincoln.
What's the enrollment for middle school?
It's around 500.
Sorry, say that again?
Red round 500.
And when you say that they don't just deal with the RTI, they're actually going into classrooms, correct?
Yep.
And helping the teachers, because there's different levels of reading ability, and they work with the groups with that as well, correct?
Correct. They take even more students than those who qualify for RTI. They also help with the guided reading program. So they're busy. They're still, they have full days, they're helping kids. What we're saying is that in terms of AIS, RTI, we'd be able to service all students who qualify with two teachers at each of those buildings.
But then will we be losing their ability to do the guided readings, to work with the different groups?
We think that they'd still be able to provide service and guide reading, may not be for every grade level.
So in this, Rick, we would only be servicing kids that qualify?
No. I think we can still service even more kids than those who qualify for AIS, even with And the last table I wanted to present to you was, it was a great question that was brought up. Does reading at the high school, a reading-specific class correlate with graduation rate? So we look back at the last five years. We have had reading at the high school each of the past five years. You can see how many students were enrolled total at the high school during those five years, and you can see and you can see the graduation rate for each of those school years.
That graduation rate, that has nothing to do with reading at all, right?
Graduation rate is impacted by so many different factors. It's not just reading. Does reading play a role? Absolutely. If a student can't read, it would make it hard to graduate. I just recently met with the high school admin team, and we did a debrief on last year's non-completers. And the counselors went through and identified the primary factors that impacted those students and their inability to graduate on time. The two most common were attendance and mental health, which are probably intertwined. And that probably comes at no surprise. So you're right, so many factors influence graduation rate, not just a reading class.
If a program was going up on school year, those that need extra help? I must say, I've heard we talked about the presentation. Yeah, I think so.
Talk about the program that was presented last year?
Yeah.
Okay.
Maybe that's AltEd, is it AltEd or Operation Graduation WhatsApp? Yeah, and the question is whether or not we'd be able to run an AltEd program, given the staffing that we have at the high school. I do believe we can do more with the staffing that we have. If we maximize the FTE at the high school, can a full AltEd program run? I'm not sure. I'll have to work with Mr. Bennerick, his team, to see if it can run for next year. Yeah, that's a great question. I would hope that we are nimble enough with our staffing and what we have in our current departments, that if a student showed that they had a foundational reading deficit, we can find ways to assist that student. It's hard in high school, right? That's pretty late in their schooling. But I do think that we can work with the admin team, work with the ELA department, work with our reading at the middle school to see what we can provide for that student.
I still can't wrap my head around the fact that we have 500 enrolled in RTI at middle school?
No, no, there's 500 students total, I'm sorry, at the middle school. That's their total enrollment.
Okay, so how many do we have enrolled in?
I don't know what the AIS number is at the middle school. I'd have to look that up.
We can still get that for you, yeah. Thank you. I was going to say, 500 students?
No, that's the total enrollment.
Okay.
So the first column is the superintendent's draft that we presented last week, which again gets us down to a 2.19% spending increase, slightly under the cap by $849. So 3.25% levy increase and a tax rate increase of 1.63%. The tax bill on a house with an assessed value of $160,000 would be $4,000. And one with an assessed value of $200,000 would be almost $5,000. So that's a range increase between $64 and $80 from the prior year's tax bill. Scenario Two, which brings us over the tax cap, which adds back the two reading teachers and one librarian, and fully funds both SROs, gives you a revised spending increase of 2.75%. We matched the funding increase from the superintendent's budget, which, again, I alluded to, was from fully funding additional funds and the tax surcery reserve based on some settlements we just got. We went back and looked at that, freed up some money, looked at how we bill other districts for health and welfare and individualized educational specialized programs. And we're able to squeeze a little more revenue in that area. So the gap to the cap is now $614,115 if we decide to do Scenario Two, which is a 5.09% tax levy, 3.44 tax rate increase. The tax bill on a $160,000 home would move to $4,070. On a $200,000 home, it would move to $5,088, which is about $136 to $170 increase from the prior year. Annual, annual. I had done a, prepared a slide last week. I wanted to go over it again. The 2,591.36 is basically 4% of the current year's budget, which we're allowed by the State Education Department to have no more than 4%. If you take the projected surplus for '24, '25 of $2,148.090, that would leave us with $4.7 million as we end the school year. As you know, from the budget scenarios presented, 4.143.558 will be used out of that. Think of your bank account, your savings account. We're going to grab 4.1 out of that 4.7. You'll have like $600,000 left in the bank at the end of the, or the beginning of the school year, which is .89%. Typically, we're around 3%, 5%, or 4%. That would be historically low in my 18 years here. Tax cert reserve, we're using $165,000. Retirement reserve, we're using $50,000. Although pension rates aren't increasing yet, we're still going to use $50,000 to try to alleviate the reduction of staff. So $215,000 of reserves supplement the use of the 4% or the what's in the bank. So that's 4.358.558. Or it's propping up the budget by 6.55%. So what does this do as far as going into '26, '27? Always looking ahead. We have to make up that $4 million every year. We've been doing it for a long time, but we've been getting surpluses of basically $3.5 to $4 million, based on underspending by 3% to 5% of our budget. As you know, this year, with the influx of special education and prescription drug escalation, we're going to be half what we normally have, and that's what I'm trying to present here. We're also going to add back $374,000 to the budget next year on leave of absences that we're holding in the budget for a dollar each, but they'll come back at full salary next year. So we'll start '26, '27 with almost a $4 million hole. If, in fact, we went with the superintendent's draft, you can see that the 12-year average across the board in critical areas, general support, building and grounds, transportation, instruction, benefits, debt service, interfund transfers to other funds, they've historically averaged 2.6% spending increases over the 12 years. You can see if we adopted this budget, general support is going down by 7%, which is one, staff layoffs, and elimination of certain services we did through BOSEs that are sunsetting. Building and grounds, again, is decreasing as we're reducing headcount by two and decreasing utilities and so forth. Transportation, reducing out-of-district runs, not for our students, but for when they go to facilities that we can't accommodate with our own drivers. That allows a decrease there of almost 4%. You can see the big spike in benefits, we've gone over that. And debt service, the debt falling off is decreasing. Interfund transfers is decreasing also. We don't have to, at this point, provide any money to the school lunch fund for bad debt. So a 2.2% spending increase is more in line with our 12-year average. And this is kind of a snapshot. I didn't want to give you the whole chart for the fifth week in a row. But you can see '13, '14, we're in the recession. We had a high tax cap and a high levy increase and a 2.76 spending increase. That was kind of like an aberration then, due to the recession. '14, '15 was the only year that we overrode the tax cap. It was a .8 allowable. We went out with a 1.76. The voters supported that. It was a tax increase of barely above 1% with a 3% spending. So on average, you can see the tax caps are in 2.73, the levy slightly over 2, 1.3 tax rate, 2.6 spending. That kind of falls in line with if we adopted the superintendent's budget. Contingent budget. So I did it for both scenarios. One, if we stay under the cap, and one if we override the cap. If we stay at the cap and we go to a contingent budget, what that means is you have to keep the tax levy at the same amount of the previous year. So you can't increase taxes. So we'd have to cut almost 1.1 million, and you must cut in proportion to the last presented or adopted budget, whichever has the higher admin, I believe. But you can see that if we have to cut 1,084,831, 148 would come out of administration side and 937,155 out of the program side. Program is instructional and transportation. Admin is not just administrators, but it's things like our attorneys, our fiscal advisors, our postage, all the good stuff that kind of does the backroom stuff. And then if we have to drop, if we go over the cap, we've got a further drop to contingency, almost $1,007. And you can see now you have $229,000 in the admin side and almost $1,005 on the program side. So a steep drop if we override the cap. This doesn't outline every cut you would make, but right out of the SCD, you can see the Board of Ed determines what would be a contingent expense, but you must maintain the essential educational programs. So just to give you a quick little snapshot I put together, sports would be $465,000, which 931 athletes participate. Field trips, which includes the cost of the venue and the transportation, late bus runs. It gets you about $621,000 of cuts. Those areas, you'd still be short of what we have to get to. But I wanted to give the board a look at what can be impacted by a contingent budget. And also, using our facilities, our outside groups would no longer be able to use the facilities during a contingent budget. You can see some of the groups that use our tartan basketball, Mohawk baseball, outside dance groups, Boy Scouts. Our schools are busy. This is, as you all know from the recent article in the paper, and there are village residents that work in the district. This is what a typical tax bill looked like last year for a village resident compared to '25, '26 with the 8% tax increase at the village. Estimated county and town increases and a school tax increase of, I think it was 1.3 we had. You can see that it's over $8,000 for a $160,000 home and over $10,000 for a $200,000 home. Almost 4% increases, so pretty significant. I think when we looked, it was $13,000 resident, and we got under $2,000 to vote last year, I believe. Cost to run the vote, about $5,000, which is the legal notices, the inspectors, supplies, staff overtime. It's the third Tuesday of every May is the first budget vote. If, in fact, you aren't successful, you have a June 17 statewide revote day. So if the budget unfortunately goes down, the board could elect to immediately go to a contingent budget. They could go out with the same budget on the revote day, or they go out with an amended budget that's totally determined by the board at that time.
Would you go same expenses as second chance to the revote?
Maybe a dollar more. Coffee's more expensive. So the propositions to be reviewed tonight are the first proposition, which basically keeps us $849 under the tax levy cap. And then Proposition Two, which is worded a little differently because it has to note the fact that we're going to override the tax cap, and that would be the 5.09 tax levy increase. And then Proposition Two would be the EB infrastructure, which I'll have a presentation next board meeting. And just to refresh everybody's memory on that, I'll bring the architect and the construction manager in, and we'll go back over that again.
I think there's a type of one of the propositions that was infrastructure. They approved it in 2035.
Should be 2025. Unless you want to push it out. Thank you.
I have one question, actually. I'm looking at page 11. Maybe I'm not seeing it for some reason. So, on the final draft, the first Scenario One, we're $849 in surplus. On Scenario Two, where the gap to the cap is $614,000, the only thing we're adding on the SROs and the two reading teachers again and the librarian, right? Not understand that matter, or?
There are some savings that were in the superintendent's draft that aren't, won't be in the scenario, override the cap, like utilities. I couldn't go that deep over there. When I got to the tax cap for the superintendent, I was trying to minimize any other additional staff to get under the cap. We're basically going down about as tight as we could go. So if you're going to go over the cap, you know, add back the three teachers, I didn't see, I couldn't find the justification to skim utilities down so low, things like that. That's about the only difference.
So even though it says in Scenario Two is adopting Scenario One, but also adding back in SRO, it says superintendent recommended budget, but fully restoring SROs and reading teachers in the elementary librarian?
Three FTEs, $41,000 for the fully funded SROs with the expense changes.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Susan, over the last couple of meetings, and you said it again tonight, I just want to make sure that we all understand. When you're talking about the elementary schools, you use the phrase internal reshuffling. Is that what happens every year? Just so we all are on the same page?
Yes, yes. When there are open positions in one of our elementary buildings, the first thing the principals do is offer people in the building who might want to change a grade level to move. And then if we have people who are being what's called involuntarily transferred, we make sure they get a position first in alignment with what we believe, based on their experience, they would be best there. So in the scenario we're talking about, we have offered the two reading teachers and the librarian, who were destined to have those positions abolished. We've offered them classroom positions, providing that their certification is in alignment. And if they choose to go to the classroom, they would be an involuntary transfer. We would place them first, and then if there were... open spots still left, the internal shuffle takes place.
And those are for the four people, right, stated?
True. Three of the four. One of them is in a long-term leave of absence, and that's one of the leave of absence that Drew was referring to, that we would not fill this coming year. We would just hold it open. When someone's on leave, the position they hold is what's called encumbered. So we can't abolish that position. That person moves back to the position.
As far as Mr. Arquette's chart that he gave us, thank you. I appreciate that. That helped me a lot today, over the weekend. So the plan would be to go at elementary, go two, 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 and four, and then one for secondary. So with the four at SAC, I think that's our biggest school, is there a plan if there's sickness, like I believe Mr. Sang asked about the librarians, or if they do need to go to the middle school? Would that person from SAC maybe be, I hate to say a floater, but it's the best thing I can think of right now?
That's hard to do. Oftentimes, it doesn't work out schedule-wise to a teacher from the elementary go cover a class at the middle school. If we found that we have a reading need at the middle school, like a class that needs FTE, there's the potential to pull some of the reading from SAC and Daga, and to have that person also teach at the middle school. We talked to Principal Federico about that.
Okay. So if we go with the proposal over the cap, that keeps the teachers and keeps things that, you know, most of us up here over the last few weeks have all talked about, as well as all the emails that we received, which we appreciate, maybe do a lot of reading this weekend. If I figured it out right, it's fourteen dollars and twenty-five cents a month. If we take the number over the year, and that's a two hundred thousand dollar home in Scotia-Glenville. So if you break that down by twelve, so that's what we'd be looking at. And then lastly, I know we've had a lot of, again, emails, which are great, that we're going to vote no on this. But I think it's important, as Mr. Giaquinto did, and I think the Board asked to make sure that we do discuss the contingency budget, that everybody does know what's in that budget, that we could go out at five point oh nine, the first one, and that gets shot down, and then we go out at three, two, five, and y'all are irritated still, and that goes down. Then the contingency budget, as you saw, and if you need that back up there, I'm sure we can get somebody up there, that wipes out everything. That wipes out sports, that wipes out fine arts, that wipes out bus trips and field trips, extracurricular activities, after-school buses. I would tend to think SROs, as well as all these other programs. So I understand the frustration. Trust me, I think I might leave the pack in frustration this year versus other years I've been on the Board. But it's important that we have this discussion amongst us to realize what a no vote means on the first, or the second, and then potentially the third. So I appreciate that. But I just, sometimes I think we go fast once in a while when we do these slides. So I just feel it's important that we all talk about that a little bit, to understand, as well as everyone here and that's watching, that if we go out and it gets voted down twice, that's some trouble for all of our kids. As we keep saying, we're here for our kids. So we need to come up with some kind of an agreement, what we're going to do.
And that's because not, as a boss, right, that the contingency, your head, when you get down, the two strikes, you're out, basically method?
Pretty good. Yep, exactly. And it needs a sixty percent majority.
Okay.
Correct.
That's one from the states.
Yes.
Correct. Yeah.
And the higher we go over the tax rate, the higher our contingency is.
Correct. All right. I'll wait for the rest of mine. Who else have questions? Or comments?
I want to talk a little bit about the SROs, because I find it very telling that Scotia has done a good job about working with us on costs, and that we're only paying about forty-two thousand a year. And then I re, I looked at the contract with the Glenville Town of Police, which it talks ahead versus currently, and what happens if we vote, we sign it each year if we decide to vote on it, but what it happens. And we're paying Scotia forty-two, and we're paying Glenville currently one hundred and thirteen, almost one hundred and fourteen thousand. And then that is a huge jump next year to one hundred and twenty plus.
I have talked to Chief Janik, who has met with the Towns Controller and Bob Kirkman. They are willing to come to the table and talk about a reduction. So we are going to do that. And although I don't really know what that will mean, they understand that we are in a budgetary challenge here. So they are open to that and willing to have that discussion as of Friday. So Drew and I will be going to talk to them about that and what that means.
That's great to hear. So maybe the question with the line for the SRO is not necessarily we're getting rid of one, but this is the budget line we have for SROs. Can the Town of Glenville work in that?
Correct.
So maybe that's something that we need to consider to still remove that forty-one thousand. Scotia's already done their fair share, in my opinion. I think it's time for Glenville to do theirs.
Well, on the plus side, if we are able to reach an agreement that is not something like less, less dollars means less coverage to us, that will help us when you talk about going into next year and what Drew has shown us, the hole we're going to have. So to me, it's a bit like when and if they settle, well, they will. When they settle the state budget, and if we were to pick up additional aid, that starts building our fund balance back, which we need. Because as challenging as this is, I think Drew's made it very, very clear, next year is already going to be worse.
Disagree.
So if we go to the table with Glenville this, or soon, would that be something that may adjust this year's down, or this year's budget, or that's?
We're not talking something that will fund a teacher, no. No.
I mean, as SRO program in general, I mean, is...
I'm sorry. I was...
So if we go back to the table with Bob Kirkman, to the rest Kirkman and Chief Janik, and we reach an agreement relatively soon, hypothetically saying, would that affect this year's budget, let's say, for the SRO program?
No, it will affect next year's budget.
Okay.
But again, we can reduce by forty-one. We're not saying we're getting rid of two SROs. We're saying this is the budget line we have for two SROs. That could affect this year's budget.
I won't change the...
Because we don't have a contract in play for next year yet. We have to decide whether we're going to vote for it.
The village is, is so less expensive because there's a grant that they...
Right.
So we're benefiting from that. The one sixty-five thousand is for the two SROs, whatever cost, if there's no reduction in the Towns' proposed contract, and continue with the village at the current rate. So we have two SROs in both drafts, the overriding the cap and the cap, staying on the cap. If we're able to negotiate, which we try to do before the budgets even vote on, we're trying to negotiate savings in all of our contract. We continue to work at this. That would create a savings, and you could use that money to either build your fund balance, or when something happens, like someone goes out on a leave, you got to pay a sub. That's where that money comes from. You try to build savings into your budget, once you know.
And I completely understand that, but right now, I'm concerned about this budget and what we can do with anything to maybe find a happy medium. And so that's why I am suggesting that maybe we make our budget line for SROs forty-one thousand dollars less, but that since we don't have any contracts signed for next year with Glenville, that's a part of the discussion. That's just my opinion.
Well, I heard very clearly from you all recently that you wanted the SROs in. So at this point tonight, to have SROs in, I would tell you, you need to land on one of the two scenarios I have the SROs in, as we know it today. I'm a little concerned about taking money out of either of these scenarios, and hoping we can make it work on the other side. Because what I don't want to have to come back and say to you is, I couldn't hold on to both SROs after you very clearly, not everyone can, but after most of you told me very clearly, the SROs are not negotiable.
And if we do get money from Glenville, then that just goes into the kitty or the fund balance for next year?
Right.
Not three point nine million dollars, but it's a little bit.
A little bit.
One thing that I haven't heard said tonight is what we'll be voting on, excuse me, is the maximum amount of money that we can spend.
Core of the year.
Not necessarily that five dollars goes here and forty-two dollars goes there, seventy-nine dollars or seven thousand dollars goes there, but that what we're setting is the limit of what we're allowed to spend. So we're, it doesn't necessarily mean that every cent is going to go to where it's originally now put into the budget.
Very much like this year's budget, people.
Correct. Correct. We didn't expect the forty percent escalation in special education or the changes in the prescription costs. So yes, we moved money under the spending cap to address emerging needs.
So Drew, looking back at the previous meetings on November fourth and January twenty-fifth, I think it was, we had our first and second fiscal presentations, and everything was good. Everything was favorable, expenses were favorable, revenues were favorable, there were surplus. In my world, favorable expenses means that's good, surplus means good. Is after that second fiscal projection, that's when these extra expenses came in with special ed, because if we look at that, and I think it was, it was either twenty-fifth or twenty-seventh, sorry, everything said surplus, and everything said expenses are good, revenue's good, everything is favorable, sorry. And now all of a sudden, here we are, two months later, and we're like, oh, what are we doing?
No. Both fiscal projections, the first one in October, and the second one I did, I think right after Christmas, was showed the impact of trying to cover a million-dollar deficit on special ed. And I said at both times, the surplus would be half of what it normally would be. And each quarter, I show the Board the fund balance projection from where we started the fiscal year to what the current fiscal projection says we're going to have in surplus. So those are published reports, and I communicate, both show the trepidation and that we're going through with the nine students, extra students above the four-way budget on special ed. It's not pointing fingers, it's just the economic impact. There was a million-dollar shortfall that has never happened before here. So...
All right. Thank you.
You're welcome.
And just so we all know, we all get, just so I can understand, so both scenarios that we have, just like our internal reshuffling that you said we're going to do, there's also some reshuffling going on in both scenarios, at the administration level, too, in both scenarios?
Yes. Those administrative shuffles are tied up in negotiations and pending litigation.
Okay. And that's where that dollar amount comes from?
That is definitely a reduction.
Okay.
You said a reduction?
Captured reduction.
I think it was one fifty-six, I think the number was.
I think it was one FTE, right?
Correct.
Correct.
And then there are other things in the works, but as I say, they are under negotiation and/or pending litigation.
Miss Susan, scenario two, or even one, account on the fact of possibly bringing back special ed students that are out of district right now?
That is a whole separate piece that's moving in its own way. Katie has proposed, or designed, proposed work with Rick and the principals around three types of programs, two elementary, I believe, one middle school, and to be able to bring back students who are currently outplaced. So we are looking for the right types of staff. And we do that, not with a guarantee of a job, but to see what the market is looking like. And then as they're working through the Committee on Special Education meetings this spring, they're looking at students who could potentially come back to us, while making sure that those students will have a program in September, just on the off chance that we can't make what we hope to make work.
Okay. Thank you. Drew, you were saying the health insurance arise in these wonder drugs, right? We're waiting to see, we're trying to get guardrails, meaning are we holding like the insurance company in Conoco? Not saying they're right. Are we trying to make sure they don't overcharge us? Are we trying to get some, like a contract made or something, or?
We have pricing contract with Highmark slash ESI on all our drugs. As I've stated before, again, that personifying is that one point two percent of our members are accounting for forty-two percent of the drug spend on Highmark. And it's the ever-changing, fast-paced introduction of specialty drugs and such as that. They're a thousand dollars a month and more. And there's guardrails that aren't in place now in the formulary that will take collective bargaining cooperation. You saw when I presented our collective bargaining agreements that clearly map out what the formulary is, what the ESI, Highmark roadmap is. And that's good for the, you know, we negotiated in good faith a few years ago. Things change. No one could have seen this explosion coming in the last couple of years. So right now, I'm worried about it, because there's districts that are putting in a million dollars of their fund balance this year to cover the holes on the self-funded drug. We're putting about two hundred and fifty thousand, and again, projecting a thirty percent drug increase on Highmark. The insured drug plan on CDPHPs is going up like two percent. There's more guardrails on the insured plan. But as you saw, our membership has the option, it's negotiated in good faith, Highmark or CDPHP. So we honor those agreements, we'll work with those agreements, and hopefully, as we move forward, we'll get some guardrails in place. But right now, there are no authorizations required on a tier of certain specialty drugs in GLP-1s.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Standing on what Carnjit was talking about, I'm going to sound like a broken record and bring up the MOA again, where we've had three out of the six sign for it with respect to the guardrails you were talking about with the insurance, and it in fact could save us approximately two hundred and forty thousand dollars. Was there any movement this week, considering we've been talking about maybe moving forward, trying to move forward with this on doing that? Because that two hundred and forty really closes massively that gap between scenario one and scenario two to make. Has there been anything on that?
Today's the deadline with Keshik. I believe my last correspondence with Keshik was, most districts got all the groups to do it. I think Bethlehem and Scotia got some of the groups to do it. Braavon was coming up to the wire to know what they were doing, and Burr Hills said not until negotiations opened up. But most of the twenty-one districts got all or some of the bargaining units.
And is that an MOA that has to be voted on by the whole association, or is it one that could be signed by leadership?
Admin's leadership, seven, six, six leadership, and the secretary I'll sign in my office.
Going back to the reading teachers for me, is there a way to get that number of students enrolled in RTI for middle school? Because that's, I feel like we've been focusing a lot on elementary, as we should, but we're still having middle school, we still have high school. And not having a high school reading teacher at all concerns me. It concerned me before this all came into play. And knowing that we're going to be down to, if we go through with the way things are, one reading teacher for middle school, is there a way to find out what that number is? Kind of give us some insight as to what to do?
Yes.
Tonight?
No.
No.
That's my concern, right? Elementary kids are going into middle school, and they still need reading, and then they have to switch into high school, and we still have that gap still coming.
And then they're transitioning into high school and we still have that gap still coming in from COVID. So that was, that was my question earlier, is can we meet those needs where we're at with what we have and will we meet those needs for our high school students who are coming through? And that was a yes, we'll meet those needs.
But the chart that we have on secondary reading, I'm struck up together. We currently have had for the last five years, a reading teacher at high school. And it hasn't helped graduation rates. So per se, I know there's a lot of other stuff in there. I get it, right. I fully understand the COVID mental health, I get that fact, but we've had one for five years. I'm at same that the chart and just refresh my memory. Have we always had four librarians, one for each elementary? I thought there was a time where we did, we had three for four elementary schools. Maybe when my oldest son was in school, I forgot.
There was a time before I came to Scotia where there were three librarians covering four buildings. I think the schedule that we presented is similar to what was done back then.
Well, there was a time when we had two librarians on the elementary level. They each did two schools. And that is one of the things that the board back at that point in time was very emphatic that it did not work and that we needed a full-time librarian in each of the elementary buildings. And luckily, we went through a good period of budgeting where we could put those back. And I am not in favor of getting rid of a librarian at the elementary level. I feel that each building needs to have a library that is open every day for the students. And I, I didn't work, I, the board back then didn't feel that it worked. And we put them back. How, I, I heard the words talking about the superintendent's budget, that we can get by with these cuts.
Correct.
And I'm not sure that getting by is good enough for me. I think we have to do everything we can do for the kids and have stuff available to them. Especially with COVID, I hate going back to COVID. But these kids fell behind in reading and all this stuff. And we are not caught up, we are still well behind on where the kids should be. And I, my personal opinion, while I say it, is I don't think it's enough to go with your budget. I think we need to go out over the cap. I think we have to give the kids the reading and the libraries. And I think we have to give our community the opportunity to say yes to a slightly higher percentage and give the kids what they need and not just give by.
And Pam, you may recall that I have said all along, I don't want to make any cuts.
I know.
So when you say getting by isn't enough, that's true. I don't disagree. However, on the first night we had this discussion, this board told me they wanted to go out at or under the cap and to bring them 2.8 million dollars in reductions, which we have worked very hard to do with the least amount of harm to anyone. But I want to be clear that I don't sit here and say, let's cut programs or services to kids. I did what you asked me to do.
Absolutely, you did.
In the best possible way I could.
And we will make this work. I think we also said that unless we saw that we weren't happy with the cuts that had to be made to get to that brand. And what I'm saying is I'm not happy
And that's fine.
With the cuts.
Absolutely.
You did exactly what we asked you to do and I do appreciate that. And I know it was hard work to get there. But I think we have to look at possibilities and where we are. And I'm scared to go out over the cap, I'll be honest with you. But I'm saying in my gut that I've got to say that I think the community will support us because it's giving, it's keeping reading teachers and a librarian and different things like that and the SROs and whatever that I feel are important to the kids. So that's my opinion, that's where I'm standing. Is I feel we at least have to give the community a chance to pass a higher budget.
I agree with you, Pam, because everything I've got from the community as well is saying that if you come to us, because it's so infrequently that we've done that, that if you come to us and you say, hey, we need this, then we're going to back you. If they don't, then we're going to come back to the drawing board. But the getting by thing is what keeps striking me as well. And I really appreciate all the work and I know it's a ton of work for Drew and yourself to do. And I think that should be, any of our perspectives to begin with is we want to get under the cap. We want to charge the least amount and give the most. But with what we're looking at currently, this is what we've got to push out. So I'm definitely with Pam on that one. That's just, I think we need to give a chance to ask, that's overwhelmingly, I've had one person I've talked to that said, yeah, no. Everyone else is, if you need it, come articulate that and we're going to come out to the polls and we're going to back it up. So that's where I'm at too.
Well, I think there's the other side of that, that we've had emails and texts and yesterday at two grocery stores that we cannot go out over the cap. You know, the board has a fiduciary responsibility to the entire community. I love our staff, I love our kids, that's why I do all the volunteer that I do, same with you. But we have to be realistic that if we're not going to look at this this year, we see the monster we're facing next year. And I'm not sure if that number includes the committee or whatever we're going to do to look to repurpose a school, which is definitely needed. We didn't want to rush that this year, but next year, that's definitely has to happen in my opinion. But right now, we're going to talk about this year. So I don't want to cut anybody. I can see, you know, and that's why I asked that question, so I was pretty confident my son went through with three librarians. And he's pretty good right now. He's maybe different than everybody else, I get it. But I think we have to be realistic. We, we received a pretty good email today from somebody, a respected member of our community that really opened my eyes a little bit to what we could have, what we couldn't have. I don't want to, I don't want to cut any teachers, but the same aspects, going out at 5.09 is tough. If it started with a four, you know, it's a little different. You know, 4.89 versus 5%, that's tough, especially when the village is 8.1 or whatever they're going to go out at. That, that's a tough pill to swallow for everybody. Just not, not parents who have to remember there's senior citizens. And the majority of the people that vote, historically, not this year, so don't throw anything at me, aren't typically people sitting in this room right now. The people that vote are senior citizens. You see it at the polls, you see it when they leave. So I've said now for seven years in a row, sitting up here, the first couple over there, that if we do go out over the cap, because I'm the guy that was quoted that says I want it all, which I do, we need to sell this to the best of our abilities. Because going out and saying 5%, this is why, so we don't get yelled at, it's not going to pass. That, that's my opinion, that's, I hear it on the streets. I, I hear it from the, my friends' parents that went to Scotia, like you can't do this. You're not going to, this is not going to pass unless you guys fully explain what we're doing. I don't want to cut anything, but I am nervous to go out at 5%.
It's the levy that's 5%, the tax rate increase is only 3.4.
I get it.
So you, they're looking at a 3.4 increase in their, their tax bill. And that's what they're looking at.
What they hear is 5%. So if they're hearing a 5% on top of an 8% from the village, that's where we get stick.
But the 8% of the village is comparing to our 3.4%.
Right, I know, but I'm saying is, you know, when we're looking at that and we're saying that's like, you make a good point to say, this is what it is. And you made a good point to saying it's $14 per month on top of your taxes. Because we look at a 5%, they look at an 8% and everybody has a heart attack and says, oh my gosh, we can't afford that. We live in an Alice community, people cannot afford that on top of their homes. And they can't afford that on their food bills and, you know, keeping this and that. So I think that that's something that we do have to talk about, like how much does it cost per home? What does this mean per month? What are we looking at? And that needs to be explained pretty clearly as we do this, so that we can say, this is what it is. Not 5%, people don't recognize that 5%. It needs to be, this is what it's going to cost you on your home.
And you'd said that a while back to me there, Hal, that we do this and we got to get out there. But I haven't smelled which step and then on it, we got to do what we're not traditionally great at communicating. Get out every opportunity that we can and get five individuals, especially senior citizens, and say, this is what it amounts to. Because it is a heck of a lot, but when you break it down like that.
14 bucks.
But it is something we need, we'll have to get out and we'll have to.
Starbucks.
Yeah, one less trip to Target.
Right.
Looking at 80 more bucks because you need two levies, right? Eighty dollars. Having the
Right.
High is eighty and, you know, 3.25 and 170 on 5.09.
That's the difference, just on the high end, it's $90, which is about eight bucks.
For senior citizen, they get a reduction on, a reduction. It's a savings, I'm saying the word wrong, savings for school tax.
Yep, we pass that every year, it's typically $500.
Obviously, that's not this amount. So more or less than this, so. One less trip to Target, one less trip to, to Polley or wherever.
But I often just think we can't fool ourselves either and say, if we're going to go out with this five, we also need to come up with a strategic plan on what we're going to do next year. Because we're hearing what we're going to be at next year. Like we can't sit in these same seats and say, we have to cut all this stuff next year. Like we want our schools to be more attractive, we want new programs, but we're looking at this trend. We can't go out at 5%, 6% again next year and that holds it a pass.
Well, let's have a crystal ball for next year to see what's going to happen. The world could be a different spot, 26, 27, you never know what's going to happen. I think we go out at, at 5.09, we really need the messaging that I know Chad and I talked about before. We really need to talk to everybody's parents and just to say, listen, when your kids were in school, you passed a budget for your kids. Now you need to do it for grandkids and for other kids in this community. Just like when you were 30, the 60-year-old's voting for your budget and you need to do the same thing now.
You got to heed what Pam's telling us, historically, we've done it before and it did work, big time. So we've already learned that lesson the hard way, why do we need to learn it another time?
Can I ask a question first? Page 18 of this, implications, this is the first time I'm seeing this. And I'll be honest with you, I don't fully understand it. Why, if, if, is it, if we don't pass a 60% majority vote, then we're having to reduce almost 1.7 versus if we don't pass a 50% majority, we're only, not only, but 1.1, what is the diff, I don't understand why there's a difference between the two.
Because we're going out at more, so there's more of a difference from the second one than there is from the first.
So you're just, you're simply saying that if, say, for example, we do the 5.09 and we lose, and we lose on it and we lose, say we do it twice and we lose twice, you're saying the 1.7 is what we're now going to have to cut? Or you're saying that's just simply what we're going to lose because we're going in contingency?
If you go to contingent, no matter what you go out with, you have to get to the prior year's tax levy. So the more you go out with, further the drop is. So superintendent's is only going up 1.3 tax rate and now forgetting, but 3.25. But the override is 5.09, so you're going up almost 2% more. So you're going to drop 2% more to the prior year. It's the tax levy cannot increase from the prior year. You have to raise zero additional dollars. If the voters vote you down twice, you go to a contingent budget, you cannot raise tax levy by $1. So that's where the cuts come in. You've got to reduce expenses or to get down to the prior year levy. And the more you raise taxes up, the further drop you have to, to the prior year.
I mean, so basically, it's the same dilemma we have right now and we're just talking about numbers if we vote. I mean, we're in the same predicament now, correct?
The difference is by overriding the cap, you put the power in the minority, which is 60%, now it controls your vote. Whereas if you go out at or below the cap, 50%, like the normal years did before the tax cap.
Right.
Majority rule, no longer, now it's 60% control of the budget to override the cap. That's the risk you have. You're putting the power would less to make that decision on all of this. That's what changed the tax cap years when they did that.
And what was this current year with the 2.7, this year's tax levy number?
3.25 was the allowable tax levy increase.
That was for this budget, but what was for the current school year that went down? Because that was, we can't go over that and for some reason it's like 2.7.
No, it's, it was the dollar amount, so you'd have to look at what the levy was last year.
Yeah.
So I don't know if I have it on one of these charts, it was on the other five charts we did.
The money that we spent this school year
Right.
is what we can spend next school year.
Yeah.
Regardless of where we go out. So the bottom line is the same. It's just that it's going to look like.
It's not what you spent. The tax levy in a contingent budget is the same as the prior, as the current year. So whatever the tax levy was for 23, 24, 25 is what it would be for 25, 26, if in fact the budget goes down twice.
That was 2.83.
Thanks. That's what changed under the tax cap.
So Drew, we decide as a majority to go out at 5.09 and get sorted down, then claim to be able to go back to 3.25?
You have, you have a month to decide that, yeah. You can get back with the board and decide what you want to do.
Okay. All right, two more questions. All right, so now we move on, if there's no other questions to
To the real position and let's get a vote.
Okay. So the first one, we'll do proposition one, and then I'll read the dollar amount, and then proposition two, and then we do it. So if I get a motion, please, on proposition one for a spending cap of $66,513,694. On page 21 in the hand, now that's, that's the easiest page to look at, 21 and 22. First one, like I said, 66 million, second one, 63. So we need a motion on Prop 1.
I'll motion to accept Prop 1 when she's all the board invitation of the Scotia Glenville Central School District be authorized to expend the sum set forth in the total amount of $66,513,694 during the school year 2025, 2206 and to levy the necessary tax therefore.
Thank you. And a second? Any second, so we can vote?
No, so we can discuss it.
Okay, thanks.
I'll second it, simply so we can vote on it.
Right.
So we can discuss and vote.
All right. Any more discussions on proposition one?
I have a question.
Yes.
I'm just seeing is, is Prop 1 on here twice?
Yeah, you got to cross out the one and put it, yeah.
Okay.
On page 22?
Two.
Should be proposition two, yeah.
So Prop 1 is a 3.25.
Correct.
Yeah.
That's the superintendent's figure.
Yep.
They're both Prop 1s, one's just at the cap, one's, they're both Prop 1s.
So the first one is at 3.25. That's where we're sitting.
I have a motion second.
Yep.
All right, so all in favor of Prop 1 at 3.25? We'll call Pam.
No.
Thank you. Kim French?
No.
Kim Kelly?
No.
Mr. Roberts?
Nay.
Mr. Say.
No.
And I agree now. All right, we can get a motion then for Prop 1A or Prop 2?
I'd like to make a motion to accept.
I'd like to make a motion to accept a Prop number two, resolve that the Board of Education of the Scotia Glenville Central School District be authorized to expend the sum set forth in the total amount of $67,128, $28,658 during the school year 25-26, and to levy the necessary tax therefor.
I second.
Thank you both. Any other questions or discussions? Pam?
Yes.
Kim French?
I've been consistent from the beginning that I was not going, my non-negotiable was teachers and staff, and especially not knowing the ramifications of the middle school and high school with the reading teachers. I, I do have issues with this budget. I feel like there could have been other areas, as I've been very vocal on, that could have been worked on to assist with this. But in spite of that, I think it's time for the public to, to vote and, and let us know how they feel about it. So I say yes to this budget.
Kim Del?
I say yes, and Kim?
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Singh?
Yes.
And I vote yes as well. So we are approved at $67,128,658. Thank you, everybody, for your hard work, we appreciate it. Now the sell job comes, folks, now we gotta get out there. We gotta make a plan as a board and a community to figure out how we can get this passed for the benefit of our kids, which are the most important things. All right, other business. So now that we've just wrapped this up, I'd like to just talk about this. Kim French and I talked about this a little bit today. I don't think we can wait until week three or four of budget season next year to get this data, because it kind of was a lot in a shorter period of time for us all, and I know it's a moving piece, everything. So I either think we try to start to talk about the budget season a little earlier in February if we can, or maybe get this type of information in week two, so we can have a further discussion. I know I'm jumping into next year, but I want to get it on the table. So as the board next year comes together, we can talk about how we get this budget process started a little easier. That allows the community to give us their input, and we're not cramming it in like we're studying for a final tomorrow morning. That's my other business.
Thank you.
I'm with you on that, that was one of the best pieces of staff advice we got. They actually wanted us to go out in November, which, the sooner the better.
Yep.
I got a non-budget thing to bring up.
Good.
I didn't know our modified basketball boys team went undefeated in February?
Seventh grade after.
Yeah, I didn't think we brought that up, so I just wanted to apologize for that. Congratulate them, because that's, that's a pretty big feat, so good for them, and looks good for basketball in our future.
Absolutely.
And congratulations to our middle school drama team for what was great production this weekend.
It was so good, it was so good.
If you didn't see it, you definitely missed out, it was a great job, and kudos to everybody involved in putting that up.
This weekend's high school, so.
Adam's family this weekend, so. Thursday, Friday, Saturday, is it?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yep.
All right, any other business? If not, I'll ask for a motion to adjourn.
I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
Thank you, both, second.
One second.
Thank you both, all in favor?
Aye.
I want to vote for a thing. All right, thank you, everybody, we appreciate it.